The other thing, she died Saturday. She was a step. They're not heirs of her. Because they're not blood. Well, she adopted. Good joy. Here could have been. Not one, you know. You're on the hook. There's nobody else.
Good evening and welcome to the regular town board meeting for the town of Tuscon brave the ninth twenty twenty four. Call the meeting to order, start with the pledge to the fine. One announcement that Saturday, April twentieth, uh, ten AM to two PM is litter flock with an air is for beautification. And nine AM to two PM is a town cleanup day with electronic collection also. Our payment of bills. General expended thirty eight thousand nine hundred and sixty eight dollars and fifty four cents. Highway expended one hundred and sixty two thousand five hundred and two. Percent water fourteen thousand nine hundred and forty three dollars and twenty cents. Sewer sixteen thousand forty six dollars and eighty eight cents lighting district, one thousand five hundred and seventy six dollars and forty cents. Capital highway eleven thousand sixty seven dollars and forty two cents capital water, one hundred and one thousand nine hundred and seventy nine dollars and seventy one cents for a total of three hundred and forty seven thousand eighty four dollars and fifty eight cents. Uh, Kevin, you and Bruce have the. Order of the bills, anything?
No, I didn't. But what of the highway? There's this one item in the highway. It's what was it? The excavator, one hundred and eleven thousand? Yeah, I don't think that's that's a big explanation for one of those big numbers.
But the new designation capital highway and capital water is that what's the ground?
Uh, each of those are for our capital projects. So water, yes, would be.
Yeah. And I guess that's the end of the. Over, maybe.
Um, most of the paid bills are presented.
Oh, my God.
And a second. Further conversation, all in favor? All right, opposed. Uh, before we get into our division reports, we do, uh. Welcome Kat Scott, our legislator representative.
Thank you for attending. And she was at the last meeting just on Zoom. We freely share those here.
Uh, not all division reports will be read by the board or by the committee chairs. Uh, those that are not will be posted online. For those that wish to read them. We will start out, Kevin, I think, Water Insurance Committee.
Yeah, I just, we have a couple of things that just need to be brought to the. Board's attention. Um. And there's, oh, here it is. Um, so when the generator on the sewer plan went down, Jim, uh. Put it back together with the help of John Connolly, who I think the board should formally thank for his volunteer. Effort there. And, uh, we also instructed those guys to get a quote on a new generator because it's fifty years old and parts are hard to get. We also, um. Oh, that Dave suggested that Craig then occur being promoted to the position of lead water operator position. Um. And the committee agrees with that and, you know, recommends that the board approve that. And also that, um. Dave suggested that the owner sewer department staff change their hour to six AM to two thirty. Would seem to get more work done in the wee hours there.
And I believe that's good. We're going to need an MOA for that. So I will look through the table. Both the town and the, uh. The union agree to that. Uh. Jane, you have anything with France? Kind of quiet right now.
Well, no, uh, we did receive the grant, um, contract from MJ Engineering, which is now going to be reviewed by council here and then they'll sign it. And, um, yes, I don't see the CAC here, but the CAC will be meeting formally. Uh. I think it's next week. Yep, next week and MJ Engineering will be, um, if, you know, on Zoom as well as Peter Manning.
And when is that moving?
Oh, you're welcome, huh? Let me just look it up. I think it's the. The eighteenth at one PM.
What day of the week is that?
What?
What day of the week is that?
Thursday. Is Thursday okay? Because we were going to do it.
Then whatever your committee wants.
Okay.
Absolutely. Whatever the committee is is comfortable with and can. Can work with.
Yeah. Um, the other one, let's see, the other grants that are out there are, uh, water tower. We haven't heard the water. We haven't heard anything in the UDC. Yeah. Nothing there because that's related to the MJ Engineering grant. So that's it. No new grants submitted.
Okay. Tuscon Youth.
The last month, we reported that we submitted to the county for some smaller grants, um, that was new for us. And we're excited to announce, um. That it has been approved by the committee and we are told that there should be no reason to expect otherwise that it still has to go before the legislative boards. But it should is expected to be approved. Um, we were approved for our ten thousand dollars, which is something we do normally go for. But in addition to that. We were approved for seven thousand five hundred dollars for our holiday celebrations. So this is above and beyond what we normally get. Museum and Historic Experiences fifteen hundred, our Summer Art and Garden Club fifteen hundred. Our Summer Unplugged, which is an outdoor down the park program, two thousand and our Winter Fund, two thousand. Um. So this is exciting for us. So we have a lot more funds now to do some new programming. And, um. One announcement is we are going to Kalahari Indoor Water Park, which is. Being done at the demand of the families here in Tuscon. So if anyone is interested, you can reach out to us, but registration is next Wednesday upstairs at the town hall at six thirty. Um, Tuscon Youth will be receiving an additional discount. Um, it's an expensive trip, but we're doing payment plans for families between now. Probably, uh, we're going in October, so September. Um, we have a meeting tomorrow, so I don't have, um, a report to say what we're doing with all this new money yet because suddenly we have to reevaluate our entire budget. Um, because all of this was already worked into our twenty thousand. So. We have a meeting tomorrow. We bumped that up a week early and have a lot of planning to do. So we'll have more to report next month.
Questions from the board?
Can I add to that that the Tuscon Historical Society applied for grants to work with Tuscon Youth Commission and Tuscon Social, uh, to. You know, the grant is from the Grace Johansson Foundation and the grant's purpose is to have three sessions. To teach the children the history of the town. The first one would be related to, um, rafting. They build little rafts. The second one, tanning, they make little leather pouches. And the third one, boarding houses, they have a boarding house bunch. And so, um, we're working. Just to.
And connected to that, um, also within these funds that were allocated, the Delaware company from, which is also for Delaware. Um, they're receiving, I want to say twenty five hundred for their Kusha Tong kids program, which they created working with Tuscon Youth. So we're hoping to connect our museum and historical experience with what Jane is going for and with what the Delaware company has to boost. The historical experience for kids and do more hands on this summer. Facing it at the port. So we'll see how that works out. And actually, I'm just looking at this crystal. I think this is a typo of our winter fun. Um, yeah, we actually received more. That was a typo. Our winter fun program, we received, we put in, I think, six, we received five. Yeah, even better. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Is there anything, any chance of anything going on for Fourth of July for Tuscon Youth or?
Well, we really need to seriously discuss this. Um, we never expected to get these kind of funds for our holiday program. I actually, I should add that Crystal and I were asked to meet with the Commissioner of Youth Services. And also, um, Kristen, who works with us hand in hand with all these rings.
These are county people.
Yeah, sorry. These are county, uh, employees. Because they were impressed with the programming that we've been doing and how we evolved in the programming and. We received a lot of compliments, which. Nice to hear, but also not to do to our own horn. But she says Tuscon Recreation Program is a program. All the other parts of the county are looking to. So she wanted to thank us and discuss how we track our numbers and maybe better ways we can track our numbers. So we're working with them for that. They did ask about Fourth of July and we were sad to tell them that unfortunately we weren't able to get the space and they were extremely disappointed. Because they said, not only is this something custom residents look forward to, the entire county does. We explained the situation that we just can't get permission to use the field. And we're open to suggestions. It's a little late in the game to. Present what we did because we normally start the year before, but we are going to discuss tomorrow. We do have these funds that need to be used. So. There's always Halloween and Christmas. We have no problem doing that, but it would be nice to do something. So. Anyone has any ideas? We're open. You're welcome.
Like I said, those reports that are not read aloud will be posted online. We're going to open up the floor for public comment. It will be a ten minute. We start here on the floor. Guest star.
I was just looking through the, uh, agenda and I see that there's a, um. Cost comparison for possible porta potty, uh, restroom. Is that for the events, uh, that are put on during the summer or is that. Proposed to put, uh, public toilet currently. As part of the renovations for the town. Um, Austin.
Those are under our new business and that is for the, uh, multi generational parking in the funds.
Oh, okay. And well, then that was one of the things I wanted to ask about. What is the status of the last meeting that I was at? There was a discussion, uh, a proposal for. Putting a public toilet off the back of the town hall building and. And mixing it in or putting it in with the estimates of the renovations that were going to be done.
At this point in time, there are no renovations are going to be done based on that report that you saw that was. Informational for the board to decide on what they wanted to do for the future of this building.
I thought there was somebody here that was doing an estimate of the various designs and man.
The board has not taken any further action on that.
Okay. Okay, um, I'm going over quickly just some of the items that have been on my public comment list for. This is going on the ninth month. Some of them have gone longer than that. Uh, what is the status of the various town and LED and other, uh, in streetlights? Uh, the last I heard, you had said that. They were ordering new ones for some that were broken or weren't working properly and, um, the. The high sodium light was also supposed to be something that Knights Egg was looking into. What is the status of those?
Uh, the status is the same as last month.
So nothing. They didn't do anything. Okay, I'd just like to point out again that, uh, these lights, we are paying for them. The taxpayers are paying for them. Whether they work or not, which is outrageous, but especially with these lights that have been not working and effectively replaced with other fixtures. Are we paying to have those replaced as well?
They're still under warranty. I don't know which ones that you're specifically speaking of, but.
I'm talking about the two decorative lights. One was on ninety seven and one was down on the, um.
Yeah, no decorative lights on ninety seven, but the regular LEDs, the decorative lights. Um, could be covered under warranty and under our maintenance program.
That you would not have to, the town would not have to pay for those. They would just be put in because they were broken.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Uh. The pavilion, uh, the cost, I understand that there was going to be a cost. On a estimate by someone. Has that been done or is it in the works to be done?
Uh, we do not have one completed at this point.
But it is in the works?
We're waiting to see what the bids come back at.
I see. Okay.
Which have not been put out the bid yet.
I have to say again, the cost estimates for a building that you may or may not even be building. I don't understand the the logic of that kind of financing. I also would like to know if. If you have. A cost estimate for the building that you think you might be building. Have you also asked about the cost for insurance? For a building that is on a flood plain and also. Might have other ecological. Impacts. Has anybody done anything like that?
It would be covered under our policy of schedule of buildings.
The insurance for that building. Be able to get it.
Why would we not be able to get it?
Well, for one thing, I didn't think that you could build. Or get insurance for flooding. If a building is being put in on a place that's been designated as a flood prone area.
That would be about sixty percent of the flats then.
That's what I'm saying.
And they all have insurance. So it is, it is able to get.
And that's not grandfathered in? It's that something that. Been there for a long time?
Um, to give you an idea of the footprint of this building in the flood plain, uh, right now it is approximately two square feet. Because it's put up, put up as a post. So the, you take the. Measurement of all of the posts and put them together, the footprint in the flood plain is going to be approximately two square feet. And that comes from the building department.
Okay, well, I'm not really sure what that means, but. The only other thing I would like to ask is. With this funding investigation and estimates and whatever else you're getting. Has anybody done anything to try to alleviate some of the, uh. Outrageous. Charges that are going to be put on the Mariford flats residents, the people that are in the water and sewer district. When your seven million dollar plus renovation starts coming through.
What is the question you're asking?
Okay, what I'm asking is. I've said this before and I'll say it again. It is inconceivable to me that. One group of residents. Residents are going to be charged with the responsibility of paying for the replacement of a water and sewer system that the state has said has to be replaced.
The only thing I can tell you is look up what a special district is and what the responsibility to the special district is. And I think that will give you a clearer idea. Of why only the residents of a special district can pay for it.
Okay, the special.
And now, also telling you that. Jane has worked on securing funding for it. So it's not a, a total out of pocket. Uh, we're at seven minutes of our public comment. I would like to have some other people have an opportunity because I'm going to plug it off at. Ten minutes. If you wish to take the rest of the three, that's fine.
You're going to cut it off. All I want to know is, you said something about this, uh, uh. Special funding or something that that you look for a special district and the rules of regulation. Where do I find that?
Uh, probably you could go online and under the municipal law, you would find special districts.
Town law of the state of New York. Has provisions which are as to how you establish and what purposes special districts are created for.
Okay.
You know, water district, the sewer district, there are fire districts. There are drainage districts, there are water supply districts. There are innumerable types of districts. So it's all created by statute.
Okay, and like the statute is under what?
Town law of the state of New York.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Yes, Michael.
There've been, uh, two meetings so far of the Parks Committee and they've been extremely informative. Which raises a couple of issues to be brought forward to the whole board here. There's been, as I raised at the last meeting, no consideration of any alternatives to a pavilion down in the park. Right now there's a bid process underway and the board members are going to be asked to vote thumbs up, thumbs down on a pavilion. There's been no consideration of replacing pavilion with shade trees or other shade alternatives. The board is just going to get one choice. Pavilion, yes. Pavilion, no. And that's really a disservice to the taxpayers. We need to know what the alternatives might be. Second point is that. If we follow the money that's being allocated here, we were told that this is going to be done piecemeal. That the pavilion will be considered first. Then comes the toilet later, then comes the parks and recreation department. And whatever maintenance costs are going to be associated with all of this. The bottom line here is that the taxpayers of this town, we have a right to know what the all in cost of the pavilion will be. Before there's a vote to go forward. Not a little bit now and a little bit later. We need to know what the whole deal is. And finally, if we follow the money, uh. Last week, last month, I should say Buck Morehead. Did an outstanding job presenting the outcomes facing this building, this public space. If there is in fact money in the budget. That could be used for the pavilion. It will be better used right here in this public space. To make this more accessible and more accommodative to the public, for the staff and for the taxpayers. That's what we need to see is. That money come here rather than be funneled over to the park. As always, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else on the floor? Anybody from Zoom? If not, I am going to move into the whole business. Four point one, the mowing bids. We received pre mowing bids?
First, I received this one, Welk cut LLC. Um, Welk LLC. The. Total for the water district. Is eleven thousand five hundred fifty dollars. The total for the general, um, overall district is fifteen thousand eight hundred thirty dollars.
Sixteen?
Fifteen thousand eight hundred thirty dollars and their non collusion is here as well. And I have, um. Nicholas three. They have a non collusion certificate. And then we have. The water sewer is twelve thousand five hundred. I think that's it. Yeah. I don't see, you did not do, um, for the, for the general, just for water sewer. Then the last one I have here is from Jeremy DeGory. Is the non collusion. And he's also bidding only for DOT two for the water sewer district at eleven thousand three hundred forty dollars.
Discussion. Welk Cut was last year's bid, correct?
Welk Cut was this last year.
They're from. Uh.
Welk Cut local.
I think that's two years ago. Was their bid last year? Do you remember? See. That doesn't matter.
This is Iris. I have been trying to get in since about twenty after six. Will there be another public comment? Because I just got. In on voice.
Absolutely.
Sorry for the interruption.
That's okay. Yes, there will be another one.
Thank you. Hello.
Question from board. We have a sense that they were, did a good job last year. Um.
July. Who did it last year?
Well, Welk Cut did it last year. I, I thought they did a good job. Um. You know, and I know with the committee meeting that just happened with the sewer and water, the reason that we put it out the bid, I think this was one of the reasons that we. Had put this out to bid, um. Was because of the, the manpower issue with. All the things that have been onto that, the two departments.
Right.
Um. The question is, we've got. Previous considerations to Welk for what the mowing is, um. We've got no bids on the general.
What did we pay them last year?
I think it was about fourteen or fifteen thousand. I put, I, I budgeted twenty thousand.
Okay.
Um. Out of fear of this.
Yes, yes.
Uh, it comes down to the water and sewer mowing, um. You know, you've got a hundred and ten dollar difference between, uh, or two hundred and ten dollar difference between the two lowest people, um. Does the board wish to split it and go with Jeremy DeGory, who's got the lowest? Or do they wish to give consideration on performance? Um. And put it all into one bid together. For the same company that they get voted. And I believe performance would be enough to get.
Lowest responsible bidder. That's the thing. Does performance account for responsibility?
Well. Yeah. But you, you'd have to have some basis to say that the other one.
And actually, yeah, we can't because I think Jeremy had previous bids in the camp. So if we go with the two lowest, Jeremy would be the one for the water and sewer mowing and Welk Cut would be the one for the general mowing. And. That would be my recommendation to the board.
Yeah, I mean, there's the. Difficulty in dealing with three vendors and.
Yeah, but. Which they would anyway. The reason we split the bid was because of the special district.
Right.
So. Uh, I would make a motion to accept the lowest water sewer mowing bid at eleven three forty by Jeremy DeGory and the general townwide mowing bid from Welk Cut at fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty. I'll second that. Further discussion? All in favor? All right. I oppose. Uh, highway stone bids. This. I think we're going to end up recessing with, um, we can open them. And we will allow Don. Depending on what the, are you available tomorrow at all?
Well, um. Eleven. You're in school, you're in school, right? Are you alive? No. What time can you do? Earlier than that, okay, or later, probably earlier. All right, you want to do it like eight thirty or something?
We do it.
Nine? Yeah, it's fine. Okay.
We'll do that at the end. Yeah, three will be enough. And Kat's. Probably will go over that also if we run into an issue. But Don said he only needs about an hour to go through them.
So we received one from Declan and L C. And. We have their non serving certificate. You want me to go through all the different?
Probably, well, just the prices item because otherwise.
Uh, question, question, we're at fifteen dollars fifteen cent.
Mm hmm.
Um, you know. The number. Seven, I believe, is nineteen dollars fifteen cents. Seven, I believe, is nineteen dollars fifteen cents.
Yes, go fifty seven.
Three A, I forget, sixteen fifteen. And six S is twenty two fifteen. First time that, what can we say though? Right, next one is Callahan Industries.
This is. Stoner thing.
Also stone, I'm going to do one stone bit. I wrote it backwards on your hand, you're saying, sorry. And non collusion. I'm not sure if you are. This is why Don needs at least an hour to go through them. Thor's nine thirty seven R. Not where our market is. These we goes online. And they're available and they're coming up at the office if anybody wants to.
Well, we'd probably be better off just opening them up, make sure they've got the nine collusion bids and we'll turn them over to the highway supervisor.
They've got lots of numbers. Um, then we have Jen Rutledge material. For stone. Then our inclusion is here.
Are you one?
The six S, no miss. Three A, seven seventy five.
Dad, we'll go with the non collusion. Non collusion shouldn't be accepted.
And then Rockville Materials. I did that one. Then I'm closing this here. I cannot see an inclusion here. There's no non collusion.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's it, first done. And. They've got. They have a non collusion. Seven dollars fifty five cents per tenant. Our first time delivered.
Hey, what's this?
Next, we have the Talanam, so. There are conclusions here. Twenty two, twenty four. There's Jen Rutledge. Twenty three dollars fifty five. First one delivered. Point eight, mine materials. Conclusion is here. All the bids will be available for you at the office. And there's a copy of all from online.
Thank you. Uh, the multi generational park. Uh, authorized the supervisor to have the park surveyed. I know we discussed this before. Um, for that will be the note or property lines going forward and also for the floodplain certificate. Could we require it for any building?
And did we call around and ask if that, if there's an old survey available?
We're still going to need an up to date survey for the floodplain certificate. According to Jim.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately. I would take one from the fifties at work, apparently not.
Yeah, well, plus you, but the new properties, but. Yeah.
Do you need a vote? I do. In a second?
I'll second.
Further conversation? All in favor? I oppose. Portable restrooms, um. We've got. Three quotes. Um, four companies. Were requested for quotes, three of them came back. We've got one regular unit and one ADA unit. The, in looking at this, the. Clean, there's two special notes on the bottom, um. The affordable body has an environmental disposal fee of nine percent, which is included when you see the, uh. Total rental cost on the two fifty seven and the three twenty seven. In a twenty eight day cycle, it comes up six thirty six, that because it includes the, uh. Nine percent disposal fee. Because if you add the two of them up, it doesn't count, right? Um, their extra cleanings for one twenty seven and one six. For a total of three hundred and twelve eighty three for both units. Uh, Reeves was one sixty eight for the regular unit rental. Um, two seventy for the ADA rental. Per month, twenty eight day billing cycle. They do have a one time drop off fee, seventy five hours. So their twenty eight day cycle is four hundred and thirty eight dollars. Their extra cleaning fee is a hundred and fifty dollars, that includes both units. The, uh, notation on that. Is that they require two weeks notice for the extra cleaning. Um, all of these are done on a weekly cleaning. For the prices that are afforded for the regular unit and the ADA unit. Um. For Lang, the regular unit was one seventy five. The ADA unit was five twenty five for a total rental cost of twenty eight day cycle of seven hundred. The extra cleaning fee was two twenty five and that included both units. Um. So those are the three quotes that we have right now.
So they include a weekly cleaning?
Each of these does include a weekly cleaning, yes. And these would be rented from, uh, we were talking May first to October thirty first. For a six month period.
Well, how many? People, visits, does a. Sort of body. The theme?
I, I couldn't well spend it unless I got. Um, we were, we were going with two down at the park because I put one at each of the corners. And one of them to be in that special. They also, all of these come with, uh, hand sanitizer.
Looks like Reeves. Little bit, isn't it?
Yes. Reeves comes in at the low bit, the, um. The one thing you'd have to know is the two week notice for the extra cleaning, but I. You know, it was brought up previously, I think we're going to know when we've got events down there. It's not like the main street event.
Right.
I just did a calculation of a six month. Just to give you an idea, um, who's the first one? Uh, affordable party is three thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. Reeves is two thousand. Six hundred and twenty eight dollars, so that's a twelve hundred dollar difference. And. Lang is forty two hundred dollars, so that is quite a bit difference.
Well, with your terms, I'll go a little better and.
I will entertain emotions. But I make a motion. Uh, a motion to accept the. Bid from Reeves. For the multi generational park, quarter bodies for one regular and one ADA fortified. I'll second. Further conversation? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, moving right ahead. Uh, playground mulch?
I'm sorry, there is one question.
Okay.
Does that satisfy the state?
No.
If we had a, no?
The fee, no.
If we had a pavilion of a not that.
Not according to, in the, but that's another conversation we can have.
Yeah, okay.
That would be too easy, why would that satisfy?
I, that would be so neat.
Uh, playground mulch. Quotes received, these do include delivery, uh, mulch mark was twenty nine dollars per yard, B V I got mulch was twenty two twenty five a yard. And throwup landscape was thirty five dollars per yard. Um, mulch part was two hundred yards, B V I was two hundred yards, throwup landscape was two hundred and ten yards.
What area is this covering?
Uh, the stuff playground.
Just the playground area?
Yep.
And it's wood home?
And it's playground.
It's not colored mulch, but.
What?
It's not colored mulch, but. I don't know, it's apparently not, sorry.
Yeah, I, I couldn't, my wife would pull me if I approved.
Is that the whole tractor trailer again?
It's two of them. Because last time we did one and. I always said that, that it was not enough, he said you have to get at least two of those. Um, and then the just one was around the swing and the slide area.
We changed all them fine trees, so now we've been a mulch memo. Yeah.
No, they are, yeah, playground quality.
Uh, so B V I is a little bit, right?
B V I is a little bit.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
I second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Jane, you've spoken with Lee Allison again.
I just, uh, yes, I did.
I spoke with her the other day also. Um. We had hired her last year, although we hired her late, um. Looking to hire Lee as the gardener. To do those things that are outside of the beautification areas. Um, last year she was at thirty dollars an hour.
Yeah, and I, I think she was staying with that. Um.
And I know one of the first things we talked about was the grass that's down at the, uh.
Yes.
Playground, since she'd be hired.
Discussion on that, is there, what are, is there a limit to our hours?
Yeah, um.
It's budget, it's budgetary, I meant.
We're, we're going through the budget pretty well, so the hours, it's not going to be forty hours a week. Um, a motion to hire Lee Allison as a gardener, pay rate of thirty dollars per hour for the growing year of twenty twenty four.
Question, um, so who will be in charge of, who, who will be supervising?
Uh, either Jane or myself, usually, usually we'll probably put her in touch with the beautification group for the areas that she's not. Um, I don't believe it's going to be a ton of work, um, beautification has kind of stepped up for a lot of the areas that they're doing.
Could we, um, could we ask Lee at least for every other month, just to kind of do an update from, uh, for the parks?
Yeah, we could be. We could actually report into the park committee about what's going on if you want.
Her billing will reference it, I, you know, she has a date on. Um, I think her billing.
That's why I said every other meeting. Just to get an idea of what's, I had bills.
I'm not going to commit her to doing that.
Um, so I've got a motion with, uh. Go ahead.
Uh, Greg, just, just to clarify, she's being paid, that was a particular keeper. She's not being paid on payroll, she's being paid via a voucher, so it will be monthly that you will save back her hours and pay in.
I think that's what I was trying to say, yeah. Yeah.
I still think a couple of appearance, it doesn't have to be regular, but a couple of appearances in front of the committee to understand how well it's budgeted and. Planned out is a good thing.
Oh, that's true.
So with votes, I'll second. Further discussion?
Uh, good luck back.
Uh, I did. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, streetlights, we did get a quote from. Nice seg for the, uh, hooking up of the lights that are in the seventy five Main Street parking lot. Uh, the quote comes out to two hundred and sixty three dollars. Uh. I can't pay the quote, but I will be requesting an invoice of the same amount. Normally they're supposed to send an invoice for it. Um.
You mean ninety three Main Street?
Ninety three, yes. I. I saw seventy five in that for some reason, but they, they've got the wrong one. Uh, so a motion to authorize the payment of this to get it going. Upon the receiving of an invoice.
I'll move that, we don't have much of a topic.
No. Second.
I'll second that.
All in favor? I oppose. Uh, Narisford Water and Sewer. Uh, the committee has made a recommendation to promote Craig Schnedeker as per the. Uh. Contract with the union to lead operator. Uh, the recommendation for the committee was for the Narisford, uh, water district, and I think we would be better. Um, as long as the board agrees and not splitting it and making him the lead operator for both the Narisford Water and then Terrence for Sewer District. Um. This gives him the authority to dictate to the men. You know, the work and. We are looking for him to get his operator's license for sewer. There is nothing in the contract that says he has to have a license to be the lead operator. Um. My recommendation to the board would be to make him a lead operator in the water and the sewer district.
Would. Would that necessitate a further increase in its pay grade?
No, it would be the same, uh, hourly rate. Right now, what happens is. They get paid fifty percent by the water department and fifty percent by the sewer department. If we made him in one, he would only get it for those hours that he's working. But we're asking him to be the, that's the lead operator. Currently, and he's been doing it. For the last year. Um. Was it cool with Dave? Uh, they work for us.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I, I don't want to make waves of this.
No, we're not making waves of him. I just, I just think that if we're asking these people to step up under these jobs. Right, um, and we want him to be our, our. You know, we're grooming him to be our district. And I have not discussed with Dave. That's why I'm.
Are you going to pay him, um, the water? How, just for, are you splitting the salary right now? No, you're just paying water because.
No, we're, we're making him a lead operator. It's in the contract. You've got operators and you've got a lead operator. Lead operator gets two dollars more per hour.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, it was, yeah. Okay.
So I would entertain a motion to promote Craig Snedeker to the lead operator for the Narisford Water and Sewer District.
I'll move.
Do you have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
I.
I oppose. Uh. The committee also reported that there is a. Generator issue, um. Down, well, we've got two different generators, one that's obviously at the sewer plant, uh. And I believe the committee has already asked him to begin searching quotes and check the, uh. State gift for these, um, the other one, can I, we, this kind of a question for you, we've got a, uh. We've got an easement. For two things, a, uh, pumping station, which is underground on Kirk Road. And the other is the control box for that pumping station, which is above ground. Each are on separate pieces of property. Um. We need to put a generator there. Is that some, how do we go about getting a, a larger easement?
Can we go to the property, is that the railroad?
No, I wish it was, that'd be easy.
Yeah, but the property owner.
Okay. Then that's, that's the discussion, we're gonna have to start those discussions with the property owner at some point in the near future to. Be able to upgrade these, these facilities. Okay. Um. I don't know that we need, we, I think the committee is requesting quotes, so I don't need, the board needs to authorize him to get them, I think that's fine, he's gonna bring them back to you. Um. And we can have a further discussion on that, or the easement on that.
Hmm.
Uh, town hall building. Smell in the bathroom, the kitchen, the water coming into the kitchen and the hall from outside and the boiler room, um, I spoke with. Jim about the kitchen will be the easier one of the fixes, that'll be removing some of the. Uh, filth from there, the other, and I know we had this once before Jane, we had somebody come in and actually give up the. An estimate on taking care of the.
Right, the leak.
Water in there, and that was about twelve grand.
Right. Yeah, maybe fourteen.
Okay. Um. That'll be something that we continue to look at and see if we can fuck with an idea what to do with that.
Uh, four point nine, the open space contract of. Yep, I under four point eight. Uh, since Buck's presentation to us. Uh, was mentioned during public comment. Do we know what the profit is going to be for us discussing, uh, that situation and?
Well, the building, the building committee met. Um. And we're under the realization that. To do what is put into that report. Is well beyond the scope of the monies that we've got available, or we're saving up, or looking and going in debt over. Um, the idea was to start looking at some of the things that we can take care of. Um, which at this point, I think are going to be maintenance items, right, um. We can't make warm office space if we've got water everything into the building, so the idea was to, uh, look to see what we can do with. The funds that we have available.
Um, and the building committee will make recommendations about that.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think right now that the next thing is to go out and. Revitalize the quota we had gotten for the records room, because that water does come into this room. And then, uh, we need to look at. Uh. The back stairs here, there was work done to alleviate some of the water coming in, but it needs more work. Um, I know that they didn't, or they were in the process of getting the fucking tank pumped for this building, which it could be some of the odor, um, but we've also got a, uh. A smell that comes in, and I think as Kevin had said. If we look at a different system in here for heating and cooling, and a more efficient one that's got a humidifier in it, that will probably take care of it.
Yeah, getting, getting the humidity out of it.
I think the first thing you're gonna see coming out is a couple of those suggestions. Um, open space contract, uh, authorized, sign the contract for the open space with M J Engineer and. And land surveying upon positive review of the. Contract. By the attorney for the town.
This is the open space.
Yes.
I'll make that vote.
Second? A second, uh, further discussion? All in favor?
I.
I oppose. Four point one zero official depository. Um. And both can add to Jeff's bank, it's an official depository, they create the following accounts with the authorized signers, as since presented them.
So the one on the screen.
That's not replacing.
The one that everyone can see is different than what's in front of.
The, the only difference you're gonna see on the one in front of you is that for Justice Padu and Justice Casey. Uh, they had me as an authorized signer on that, and that has been removed on both of those judges.
Why are we opening a new account with?
It's given us a secondary depository, um, right now, Capital Hudson Bank is possibly being sold to the Federal Credit Union.
Got it, yeah.
And that.
They can't take.
They can't take municipal money.
Got it.
We're not, we're staying with, with Capital Hudson right now, we're opening up this account, getting everything ready in case we need them.
So I'll make that motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Further discussion on it? All in favor?
I.
Oppose. Uh, new business. The animal control officer met with the New York State Ag and Markets Health Inspector, few procedures, and the current status of the town's twenty four hour shelter. Uh, a few items need fixing prior to use of the facility, and they are solicited. Um. Peter and his deputy are requesting authorization to attend the twelfth annual, uh, dog control officer, animal control officer conference in Gilderlin, New York. It is on November sixth and the seventh of this year, early registration is a hundred dollars per person. And rooms are a hundred and twenty dollars a night for three nights.
What is that? The D C O A T O.
Uh, animal control officer or dog control officer, those are just, uh. Designations that each of the towns give to their.
Right, thank you. Probably could've figured it out.
Yeah. This is quickly the. Um.
It should be noted that the rooms are one twenty nine per night, but you only need one room.
Mm-hmm.
Two minutes are getting along.
Yeah.
I think we've, we finally got ourselves an animal control officer that's stepped up, he's got a deputy, he's willing to do the work, and I think we need to support him in. Becoming educated in what he does, so I would make the motion to authorize. That.
I would second that.
Further discussion?
I just, I, forgive me, where is the twenty four hour?
Uh, up at the town highway facility.
Okay.
Used to be down at the town, uh. Sewer department.
Okay.
But they need that up there.
You didn't know that?
I did.
That's only because you guys, your dogs, oh.
Yeah. Love that.
Um. I have a motion, second?
Yeah.
Okay, I second. All good?
Um, here.
All in favor?
I.
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 Oppose.
Uh, I, just before we move off of that one, a quick shout out to Peter. He was available this weekend on about a fifteen minute notice, he did a really good job, and it was a very quick solution for. He for a situation.
Definitely, definitely takes pride in what he does.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, he's here.
I'm here.
We know that, we wouldn't talk about you. Uh, five point two liquor license, thirty day advance notices, we've got two places that are looking for a waiver on the, uh. Thirty day waiting period, the Big Eddie Brewery Company with a new application. The Bar Tavern located at nine three main. And the loop boxes for alteration of. Requesting for a temporary sum of three trucks or funds to help fund. Questions, I'm.
They're, they're asking for waivers in thirty years?
Waiver in thirty days, they've got the, we've got the right of the town board to waive the thirty day waiting period. That they would have to.
Oh, for public comment?
I, I think just to waive the town board.
And Kath, just, it's been my experience of that, it's standard procedure to waive that, it's been waived every time, it's been requested.
Of course.
Yeah. There's always a first and.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Alright. I have a motion to second. I will second. Further discussion?
So what's that?
I did. First, second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed. Um, for the budget, we need to create and modify some lines. And a modification, uh, budget modification. Um. And this will be up there, so my motion will be a little bit, my motion will be to create budget lines and modify the budget as presented. And to make budget corrections as presented, uh. What we're doing is the. For Jane's line with the network that she's doing, that will become a sixty nine eighty nine twenty five one. The zoning clerk payroll will be a eighty. Ten point one, the planning clerk payroll will be a eighty twenty point one. And then we will have the decrease and the increase in each of the. Stated accounts. So that we can do that budget transfer for those. And then budget corrections, and this is just, uh, correcting the codes for the deputy. Uh, first deputy town clerk from A fourteen ten point two to A fourteen ten point twelve. Second deputy, A fourteen ten point three to A fourteen ten point thirteen. The third deputy, which is currently blank, will be at A fourteen ten point fourteen. Building maintenance from A sixteen twenty point two to A sixteen twenty point twelve. Safety inspection clerk from A thirty six twenty point one C to A thirty six twenty point twelve. These are codes that are used for the accounting purposes and the powering of the money that are awarded. It's the easiest steps for me.
Who's it? Safety inspection clerk? I think it's my person.
What is it?
Assistant code.
Okay, okay.
Do you need a motion that, that, we're just. A motion to, uh, create the budget lines and modify the account and the budget corrections as presented.
Yeah, I'll move that.
A second?
I'm second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Oppose. Um, five point four revenue anticipation note, this was, uh. Brought up in the committee meeting for the water regarding the amount of money that has been, uh, outlined so far for the water project, we do have money that's going to be coming back in with the grant work. Um. And I believe Kelly, we discussed this, and we're good for a month or two on that, so I, I, I didn't think we were.
Yeah, we're not, we're not there yet.
Um.
We got Rans, we got Van.
We got everything. Um, I am going to ask that to, uh, move into an executive. Session for the discussion of the employment history of a particular individual, before I do that, I will open up the floor for public comments to those people who do not wish to wait for us to come back from the executive session.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. And before we do that also, uh, five point six is. Um, I would like to write a thank you note on behalf of the sewer department and sewer district to John Conley at the request of the committee. Uh, from Sewer and Water for the work that he did, um. John came down at the request of our code enforcement officer to troubleshoot a generator, and he was able to get it back to running, um. He's also been on our zoning rewrite. Um. And he, he made it very clear, I have to give this to Jim, he made it very clear, when one of the men said, thank you for coming, I didn't know I could call you, and he said, you can't, so you're not my friend. And it's my friend, and I'll come to do it. So. Um.
It's like that, that's him on card.
Yes. And he would not, would not charge for what he did.
Can you just announce that, um, without the repair, the men had to hand crank them?
Well, they had a generator, it wasn't, they didn't have to crank it by hand, but yes, they.
Be there.
Yeah, they did have to be there.
For that.
Had a man. Yeah.
They did. But I'll make a motion for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright, I.
Oppose. Um, so before we move into an executive session, for those people who do not wish to stay until the end of the executive session, I will open up from the floor, public comments. We'll open up from Zoom, Iris.
Hi, good evening, first of all, I'd like to say it's really nice to see some of the, the forward momentum of what's going on in town. My questions and concerns have to do with the multi-generational park. I wanted to know. Considering how many people actually live in the flats who are opposed to. Some of the aspects of what is. Planned or the workings of what is going to go forward with the multi-general park, I would like to know how many people. Who actually live in the flats. Are for this project, because I know how many people, not in exact numbers, but I know how many people are not in favor of it. And. There are a number of questions that we still have, but it seems like things are moving forward. I also would like to know, has there been any approved design for the pavilion? Is it going to be an open pavilion, is it going to be a closed pavilion? I tried to get on to the last month's meeting, and there was no way to get on. Fortunately, Crystal was able to get me on to the meeting tonight, since I was trying to get on since about six twenty. That being said, do you have any idea of how many people? Are who actually live in the flats are in favor of this project with the pavilion, et cetera? Because.
I don't think.
We could have the numbers of people who are not in favor of it.
Yeah, I don't know that we actually have a door to door survey of everybody that's on the flats that is for or against it, um. What we've had is the petitions that have been sent to the board from the different areas, but as far as directly saying. Uh, flats residents, no, I don't think we've got a, an answer to that.
Is that something that you would be in, interested in finding out the numbers? Is it something that needs to be done so that we could find out? From the people who actually live in the flats, how many people want this in the multi-generational park? Because we do know that there are a lot of people who are opposed to it. And I think part of the opposition also is, and I have to just backstep a little bit to say that. A lot of the things that are being done are forward movement, are forward moving, and are good things that are done by the board for the community. This one, I think, is something that. In my opinion, the board wants to do. And many, many members of the flats do not want it. There is also a bit of a history, and this is not finger pointing, this is just statement of facts. That there have been projects that have been carried on, carried out in the multi-generational park. And with the commentary prior to whatever, um, events, that things would be cleaned up. Things would be taken care of. There has been, there have been many numbers of times that people have called and contacted the town board. Because things had not been cleaned up, things had not been taken care of as promised. And so there is a bit of a history here that is of concern to those of us who live in the flats. Because there is a difference between what is said and what is done. And so perhaps, maybe that's something to be addressed, because as I said prior, there are many members of the flats who are very opposed to this. And I really don't know anyone who is a living resident, who is a resident living. I had to correct myself because we don't know. Never mind, I'm not going there. But how many residents who actually live in the flats who are in favor of it? And I think that it is really quite a different proportion of those of us who are not in favor of it. Is there any comment to what I'm asking?
Um, I would prefer not to, but yes, since you opened it up, it's, uh. The board has to understand that we serve all of the residents of the town of Tustin. And that we've got a public park that has been there for decades, um, that is used by. All of the residents of the town of Tustin, um. I believe that when you look at it in totalitarian, that. we may be very short slated on not doing something because we have a portion of the public that doesn't want it because they live there. I believe that's something that the board needs to consider when they make their decision. But I don't believe that that should be the whole decision. I think we have to remember that we serve all of the people in the town of Tustin. And we have heard the concerns of the people that live in the flats, we have made concessions on some of the things that we do with this pavilion. Um, you speak of a, uh, an approved design, uh, that was done through a collaboration of residents and people that want to use this, um, so I, I think the board has been responsive. Uh, as far as saying that, you know, because we've got everybody in this area around this public piece of property that doesn't want it, um, that's something the board can consider, but I don't believe that that's something that the board views solely as a reason to negate doing it.
May I respond to you, Ben, please?
Sure.
So, I don't think personally, I don't think that anybody is opposed to the use of the multi-generational park. Certainly, we have the Little League field or baseball field, or however you want, whatever in terms of softball, baseball, et cetera. There's no problem about using the park. I don't believe anybody who live in the flats has any negative feeling about the park being used. I think the problem is that it is something that is going to be far bigger, and something that is not going to be able to be cared for in the way, plus as far as traffic, as far as children in the road, as far as pets in the road, as far as people who are in the flats walking. It, it has its own atmosphere. And to drastically change that by putting something in that is over the top is not necessarily appropriate, what is appropriate is use of the park creating, we had a garden, that's no longer there, it did not work, we had, um, units that, activity units that were there at stations, that didn't work, that was a cost, that had to be taken care of. So there's certain history that we have to look at. And this particular project is going to be on the taxpayers. And I don't know if it's going to be the entire town of Tustin taxpayers, or if it's going to be more localized. So there are things to really be concerned about, I think. And I think that it's necessary that we have people from the flats who live in the flats to be involved in this in a much more active way, and not to think that we are having, and maybe it's not, you don't see it that way, but not to have something shoved down our throats when there is a history of things that have gone awry. And so that's another place that I'm coming from.
Okay, well, I thank you for your comments, the only closing item I will say is that uh, the park's budget is a townwide budget, so this is not going to be funded solely by the people that live within the flats. Is there any other comments either online, Peter?
I'm here. Hi. Uh, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to Greg for that recognition of Saturday morning, me helping to find that young puppy Husky. It was a pleasure to, pleasure to meet her. And I have a couple other things, uh, since my meeting on, uh, March twenty-seventh with Sarah Gally, Gowie from New York State, uh, there were some corrections that need to be made at our twenty-four hour shelter up at the garage, so I think that we should have a meeting, and we should go up there, and I could show you what, what she doesn't like about it and what she does like about it. And, uh, I think I spoke to Crystal about this, and I wasn't willing to do the work myself, but after evaluating uh, the building and looking at it, I am willing to do the work myself to save the town money. Instead of putting it out to bid, uh, we'll discuss this uh, when we go do a survey of it, I guess. And also I did clean up the shelter, and I took a lot of the feeding bowls and the water bowls that were not New York State approved, and a lot of the debris that was a trip hazard around the building, I did make a trip to the transport station. So if you want to go up there and look at it, it's, it's, it's pretty nice now. I did put a lock on the door, because I was drying the building out because there was a lot of mold that she pointed out, so I've been trying to maintain a temperature of sixty-five degrees in the building with what we have there. So I had to lock the door because somebody went in and turned it all off. And it got cold again, and the molds came back. But it needs to be, you know, nice environment in there. You never know when we're gonna get a dog in there. And I don't want to have to bring a dog up there. And it's forty degrees, fifty degrees, I know the temperature is starting to change. Uh, but she had explained to me, has to be environmental friendly. So it should maintain a temperature at all times. Uh, I just, you know, this is something that maybe me, you, and Crystal, Ben, uh, we should go up there and have a survey, and I could explain to you what Sarah said to me. To keep New York State compliant, you know?
You can do that. I'll let you set that up, Crystal.
Absolutely, thank you.
And I want to thank you for the appointment, I'm loving the job. You know? I did assist, I did assist, I did assist in finding, of helping to find the ex-dog, which I did not charge the town. And there were a couple of other dogs that got away, they were just over the borderline at Nobody Road. And I did go out and look and tried to help, but did not charge the town, because you know, it's in Cochettin, or like ten feet into Cochettin, and you know? But, uh, thanks again. And, uh, I, I'm away and I'll be back on Sunday, so maybe next week we could get together.
Okay, that sounds good, I'll let you do it through Crystal.
Okay.
Crystal, find the baby boy, like, tipsy.
Yeah, I'm hoping. We'll have to set up at least two or three, depending on how many you want. Oh, we only have at least two.
I can show up like ten minutes early.
Um, do we have any other public comment, if not? A motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular individual. I don't know, do we want to go upstairs and do that, or we just want to, we have to win?
So I'll make that motion. And we'll confirm what time we're meeting.
Um, yes, we have to, uh, reset. Your exception, we will take note of action as a result of the executive session. We need to determine a time to meet tomorrow, we need to recess so that the highway superintendent can look at his bids.
We've got nine?
Nine works.
Nine or nine, well, that is done, should we say nine thirty?
Nine thirty?
I think he needed at least, because he had something he had to do in the morning first, he said. Doesn't? Hmm, go for it, nine thirty?
Well, let's, if that's your memory, I'd say let's say ten.
This is gonna be a
It's gonna take a hot minute.
Can we say nine forty?
Wait, I can't, do I have to be here?
No, we don't form with three.
Okay. Because I have Rosie tomorrow, we have gymnastics at nine thirty.
Well, Rosie's not gonna be able to get to those appointments, but Crusher Stone and Sam.
You're gonna recess tomorrow, nine forty-five?
Priorities.
And who's gonna make that motion? Need a motion? Who's gonna second?
Who's seconding?
I, I enthusiastically.
Okay.
All in favor? And who, are we closing the meeting?
We adjourn.
Oh, yeah, you just, you just recessed, I'm sorry, okay, good night. See you tomorrow.